This is the regular scheduled meeting of the McDowell County Board of Education. And the meeting is now in order. Glad to see everyone this evening. And so the first item of business would be to approve our agenda for tonight's meeting. You've had a chance to see and review that. Is there anyone who would offer a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Ms. Moomaw makes the motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second. Ms. Housen.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Offers the second. Is there any discussion about the this evening's agenda and the motion?
Yes, sir. Sorry. Um, are we going to talk about discipline? And the document that we produced from our planning workshop? That had the four or five items on it. Could that be on our agenda every month as a matter of routine or update?
Or record, yes, okay. Make myself a note, okay.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so that that's actually some of the remarks that I've got for you tonight. And we're going to talk about our strategic plan as well. And what the goal with the strategic plan is to merge the strategic plan that we have now along with the four, what I'm calling the big rocks that the board presented us with. And ideally, we'd like to see that as part of the agenda on a standing agenda item. And it's it will be infused into that on a monthly basis.
Yeah, I'm not going to make a big deal, but if it could be on the in the future, like the resolution item, if it could be on the agenda so somebody looking at it is clear that the item's going to be brought up and discussed.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith, would you make a note to remind ourselves to include those items as standing items on the future agendas? Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, then all in favor, right hand, and the motion carries. At this point in the evening's meeting, we always take just a moment or two to still ourselves and to take a moment to be quiet and reflect upon the day and our work here together. So may we? It's a few minutes after six P M on Monday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-three. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the McDowell County Board of Education. And the meeting is now in order. Uh, glad to see everyone this evening. And so the first item of business would be to approve our agenda for tonight's meeting. You've had a chance to see and review that. Is there anyone who would offer a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Ms. Moomaw makes the motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Offers the second. Is there any discussion about the this evening's agenda and the motion?
Yes, sir. Sorry. Um, are we going to talk about discipline? And the document that we produced from our planning workshop? That had the four or five items on it? Could that be on our agenda every month as a matter of routine or update?
Or record, yes, okay. Make myself a note, okay.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so that that's actually some of the remarks that I've got for you tonight. And we're going to talk about our strategic plan as well. And what the goal with the strategic plan is to to merge the strategic plan that we have now along with the four, what I'm calling the big rocks that the board presented us with. And ideally, we'd like to see that as a part of the agenda on a standing agenda item. And it's it will be infused into that on a monthly basis.
Yeah, I'm not going to make a big deal, but if it could be on the in the future, like the resolution item, if it could be on the agenda so somebody looking at it is clear that the item's going to be brought up and discussed.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith, would you make a note to remind ourselves to include those items as standing items on the future agendas? Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, then all in favor, right hand, and the motion carries. At this point in the evening's meeting, we always take just a moment or two to still ourselves and to take a moment to be quiet and reflect upon the day and our work here together. So may we? I thank you very much. The next item on this evening's agenda, I'm going to ask Mr. Frank, our N J R O T C liaison, if he will introduce the team this evening.
I will. Of course, Captain Ross, I'll have you introduce the individual members of the color guard. I want to welcome our new chief here tonight. And, uh, Chief, I, you you got some big shoes to peel, but I know you'll do a good job. And could you just, if you don't mind, just tell us a little bit about yourself? But before you do, I want to say something on behalf of the come up to the mic, yeah, on behalf of our N J R O T C, I'll do it in board reports later, but I want to say something about how great North Carolina public schools are. And this is a fine example of how great North Carolina public schools are. We're very proud of our N J R O T C team. And my son was on it years and years and years ago, and it helped him all through life. And he's a product of McDowell County schools. And my daughter's a teacher here. She's a product of McDowell County schools. And I think if you're not an advocate for North Carolina public school, you shouldn't sit on the board. And sir, with that being said, the show's yours.
All right, how y'all doing today? Uh, Chief Campbell, I'm about to retire in four months from the recruiting. I'm on recruiting duty right now for Asheville Silva. I'm excited to be part of this team. I've been working with the drone team and stuff like that, and cadets are amazing. And I've got some good training from Chief McClure. And Captain Ross has been training me up as well, so looking forward to being part of the team. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Captain, would you like to introduce the color?
Today, we have Bennett Ammons, we have Watts, we have Wyatt, we have Pearl. They're all active members of various teams on your end road.
And you're going to lead us in the pledge, correct, sir?
All right. So could we stand then as the colors are presented?
Hello, God. Yeah, three, colors. Ready, one, two, one, two. Hello, God. All. Right, face. Three, and. Colors.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, three. Colors. Ready, one. Ayah, ace. Oh, one, two. Hello, God. All. Right, ace. Host the colors. Ayah, ace. Oh, ayah, two. Thank you all.
And and thank you, Captain, Chief, and Cadets. Okay, at this time, the next item on the agenda this evening is remarks from our new superintendent, Dr. Tracy Gritt. And for folks that haven't gotten a chance to meet him, well, here he is. Proud to show y'all.
Appreciate the introduction, certainly. Glad to be here, of course, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'll just kind of jump right into it. I did prepare some remarks tonight, so there's a lot to remember. I didn't think I could quite remember it all, so I made some notes. I will I will read those notes for you, kind of giving you an idea of what's been going on up to this week and then, of course, what's been going on this week. So move in. My first day in office was July the first. Now, that was not a Monday. That was a Saturday, which involved some heavy lifting. That meant Michelle and I moved into the office, or what I'm what I'd like to call my home away from home. So all joking aside, folks, I'm honored to be here and grateful to this board of Miguel Teony Schools. I want to sincerely thank you for allowing me to serve alongside you together. And I think that's the word I want to use a lot this year. You're going to hear me say that a whole lot. Together, we are committed to serving the students, staff, and community of McDowell County. In only a week, it was very evident that I am blessed to have a stellar team to work with these folks that are here, which is a testament to those before me. Mr. Oliver continues to be a great asset to our district, and he has graciously supported me in this transition. For that, sir, I want to thank you for the layers of support. Uh, one one thing I also want to point out is the first day on the job, we found out that we had some additional funding. So there are many things to be excited about here, especially when coming into the office, where we were notified of an additional allocation of funds from our commissioners. The additional hundred thousand will help the district offset budget shortcomings due to the inflationary issues. We're grateful for the additional funding. And on behalf of the McDowell County Board of Education, we sincerely thank our commissioners for the commitment to education. It's a big, that's a big, that's a big win. Uh, strategic plan, I just mentioned that. I'm sure I had asked about that, and I've got several things here to to address that. And I hope I can ease some of the some of the concern around that. The strategic plan, in my opinion, is something that guides everything that we do as a district. Um, it's something that the board helps us set that direction. And then, of course, it's our work and folks that are sitting out here before you. It's our responsibility to to drive those initiatives and make sure that we're doing those. And I agree wholeheartedly that that needs to be thematic in everything that we do. So I'm just going to read to you a little bit about that. At the June twenty-sixth Board of Education Work Session, the board introduced four focus areas. The focus areas are student discipline, staff morale, teacher retention, universal pre-K, and maintenance of our facilities. The board developed the focus areas from feedback from listening sessions with community members, staff, and administration. Last week, the executive cabinet, and that's that's a group that you'll hear me talk about a lot, the executive cabinet began unpacking the focus areas and establishing a work session for district-level administrators to address the district's strategic plan to include the additional four areas that you guys have brought before us. We appreciate the direction from the board and have had several meetings, particularly around student discipline, as our focus on student discipline can quickly shift to an alternative programming. And that is an important topic that requires deep and thorough review of finances, staffing, and state-level clearances and insurance. The bottom line here, we need time to get this part right. However, I have tasked our team to focus not only on the behaviors from our secondary students, but to focus on all levels of student discipline. With that said, we're excited to announce that we're bringing back the convocation for our staff. And we plan to have several professional development sessions available to staff in several areas that align with the district's focus area. Our keynote speaker, Dr. Silver, will be providing a session on deliberate optimism, reclaiming the joy in education, and she will host breakout sessions on classroom management strategy. Looking, I was proud of this team. They were already ahead of the ball. They were already looking for things that that pertain to the issues that we knew we had at hand. So those classroom management strategies and understanding and delaying with understanding and dealing with difficult people, that was the other topic that should be doing a breakout session. I'm excited about having a national-level speaker here in McDowell County. I think that was a good find on on our team's part and something that I think will motivate our staff. We have we have also several, as many as twenty staff members that have received training over the last year. They plan to present to their peers as well. We have from that group several additional topics on M T S S, academically gifted students and support. Also, one particular that was resonates with me, the house system, which is another another way to work on staff morale and those retention-type things. To name a few, that's just a few that we've got. So there's there's quite a bit coming. I don't want to spoil the spoil the surprise, but there's a lot coming on the kickoff, and we're excited about that. We hope to kick the year off with enthusiasm and excitement about the great things we can do together. Next up, not everything can be perfect. All right, so week one, we've we've had a few hiccups. That's part of it, right? We started this week with an H V A C system outage at West Marion Elementary. Our maintenance department worked through Friday evening to repair the system, but encountered a few issues requiring additional parts. And those parts have been ordered, and we hope to get the system up and running soon. In the interim, Principal Mr. Rourke worked with Ms. Ray at Glenwood in in case the temperature required busing a few of those summer camp students over to Glenwood. That started at seven A M on Saturday morning. By ten A M, they already had a secondary planned. And on top of that, we had folks, Ms. Silver, who had had put together some a group of folks to bring some treats over there to the students because of the air conditioner was out today.
And Ms. Peepo helped me out with that.
There you go. So so I say that, that's not normally something that I'm going to present on, but I but I say that to just show what a team we've got. I was I was super impressed to see that on Saturday morning, beginning at seven o'clock, and the issue was already resolved by ten. Now, I wish I could say that the air conditioner was on, but unfortunately, it's not. The expectation there is we hope to have it up and running by the end of the week. Tomorrow, the plan is to remain there. When I went this afternoon at almost two o'clock, and we still had a young lady in a sweatshirt sitting in front of the fan, I thought we were probably okay. Mr. Oliver had some conversations with the principals, and it looks like they're going to continue the summer camp there again tomorrow. If we move into Wednesday and it starts to heat up, then they've got a plan to to take that on to the next level. But but really, again, that's not something I would typically share. But I think it's important to share just because of the teamwork that that I'm seeing week one. And I commend the commend the board as well as as the team that we have here in front of us. Other other things that that didn't go so well this week. The North Carolina budget. Has anybody heard anything that's going on there with the budget this week? Well, it's kind of delayed. So July one marked my first day on the job, but I'm not sure that made much of a difference in the state capital. We began the new fiscal year operating on a continuation budget. This is not ideal, but Ms. Rampy and her team are up for the challenge to make a quick turnaround when things in Raleigh are resolved, and we know that they will. We remain optimistic about our state employee increases. The House and the Senate have proposed such increases. We applaud the efforts to bring about teacher raises from our legislators, and we are hoping they can push it across the goal line in the next few weeks so that we can welcome our staff back with positive news about it. And we're we're just, you know, keeping our eyes turned towards Raleigh right now. We know that's coming, and so we'll just keep looking. Opening day. I want to end my remarks this evening with some exciting news. Tomorrow, Tuesday, July eleventh, we welcome students back at the Eastfield Global Magnet Elementary School. This marks the beginning of the school year and a special time for many parents as they drop their children off with us for the first time. For those of you with my children in the room, you remember that. I remember that day. My two children were excited for our, and we were excited for our kids when we dropped them off. But at the same time, it was an emotional day for my wife and me. Many milestones were met in school, but few were as meaningful as the first day. We will keep our students, parents, and staff in our thoughts and prayers as they embark on a new year. And I sincerely thank you again for this opportunity.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gritt. I guess it would be appropriate for me to come to the podium for this next item. A number of years ago, the Board of Education thought it would be nice to have the perspective of teaching staff as we consider issues. I'm talking right into it, but it's not on. Can you hear now?
Yeah.
Okay. A number of years ago, the board decided that it would be important to get the perspective of teaching staff. And so with our Teacher of the Year recognitions, the board thought that it would be a good thing if the county-wide, district-wide Teacher of the Year could serve as an ex officio member of the board. And that's been happening ever since. And I can honestly say that each one has given their best to make it successful and meaningful, not only to the board, but to their fellow teachers. So this year, we have just wrapped up the term of the outgoing Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kelly Phillips. And we've got a lovely little parting gift for you. Oh, it is heavy. We have a nice bouquet of flowers, just our way of saying thank you. Well, we're good at it. Just our our way of saying thank you for bringing to us things that we need to know about and for making us think. That's the one thing I have to say I really appreciated about you this year. I've I've always managed to have a fresh thoughts on the way. Would you like to say anything?
It does not get any easier, Ms. Basney. You'll get nervous every time, but I just want to say thank you. I took this on at the beginning of the year, and I didn't know what it was going to mean to me. Every day, I've told you all year long that we come here because of the kids. I'm trying not to cry. But those kids, they deserve the absolute best. And all of you here, everybody that's listening online, just know that every teacher in this county wants what's best for your kids. I'm going to leave you with this, every single one of your my thoughts and prayers, every single day. I know you want absolute best for our kids, for our community, and for the people who are on listening online, those of you who came out every time this year. Keep praying for these people. Pray for them. Put them in your thoughts. Make sure you're lifting them up. Remember the kids in this county, because that's what's important. Everything that everyone in this building does is for those kids. So thank you all.
You're welcome. And our our incoming Teacher of the Year is Ms. Mary, Ms. Mary Ann Basney, who is a teacher at East McDowell Middle School. And Ms. Basney, we have a little extra special treat for you in this little bag here. Got you a nice bouquet of flowers. And you know, you can say a few words, too. Maybe we could get you folks a picture with Dr. Gritt. Gosh, it might even make the newspaper. Got you a nice little nameplate. We just put that up there so everybody can.
I'm not a big speaker, so I wrote a lot of stuff down. But this is my eleventh-year teaching. I've taught at East Middle School my entire career. Um, I I grew up here. I've been in McDowell County my whole life, so I feel connected to tons of schools that we have. I went to elementary school at P G, and my mom taught there her entire career. I went to middle school. It was junior high then at West. And I went to the high school M H S for my high school career. I don't even think the early college had started yet, but I know that would have been a great option as well. Um, I did a tiny bit at Glenwood, and I my senior year, I was an after-school worker. I started in our E C department. When I graduated, I was an inclusion teacher and a resource teacher. So I I've seen a lot of dynamic as I've I've been there. I taught for four years in special ed, and now I teach eighth-grade math at East. So I I love our county, and I love what I do. I have two boys, Bennett and Baylor, and they attend West Marion. Bennett is going into first grade, and Baylor attends the half-day pre-K program at West Marion. He loves it, and I'm sure he keeps them on their toes. But I love seeing how all our teachers in McDowell County schools support our students no matter where they are in their educational journey. So thank you, guys.
All right.
Sorry, I forgot something. I'm supposed to share some stuff about East as well. So I wrote down some stuff about our wonderful school. So East is really unique. We have the Principal of the Year, the Teacher of the Year, and the Beginning Secondary Teacher of the Year, all housed at our school. So for us, we have three lead teachers that support our teachers while we're there. We have exceeded growth this last school year. Our math teachers, we had at least one teacher in each grade level that was recognized for that student growth. We have a really great summer bridge program. They're going to have a duct tape cardboard regatta at Lake James in the next couple of weeks. We had an undefeated football team and an undefeated boys' basketball team. So that's just a little bit about East. Yay.
That's a nice photo opportunity for anyone here. I think Dr. Gritt, Ms. Basney, and Ms. Phillips, maybe we could get y'all to smile real big. And again, Ms. Phillips, thank you for your year. And Ms. Basney, thanks in advance for your time with us. Uh, the next item on our agenda is correspondence, and we have none, understand? No correspondence. And the next item, number eight, is request to address the board for a public comment. And we have one request this evening. It's from Taylor Wyatt and Autumn Anderson. And they are speaking on behalf of the R O T C program. And they want to speak to the board about a proper drill area. Okay, so, Mr. Frank makes the motion.
Second.
To grant the request, okay? And Ms. Moomaw makes the second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, and it carries. So before you ladies begin, I need to tell you that, uh, this is your time to speak to the board. But it's not the board's time to ask questions, except maybe just to clarify a specific point. Now, since you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes that you can address the board. And Ms. Dowdell, right behind you, is our official timekeeper. And if you get close, she'll maybe reach up and pat you on the shoulder or something, or say you've got a minute or a half a minute left. So, uh, ladies, the floor is yours, and tell us what you need us to hear.
Alright, so I just wanna say thank you for allowing us to speak on behalf of this. Um, it was brought to our attention about a month ago that the current tennis courts at the high school are being remodeled and moved to a different location. And we learned that the current tennis courts are gonna be utilized for our school's football team. And we just thought that it might be a good idea to throw out other options for what that area might be used for, instead of just completely demolishing it and putting mulch on top of it and turf, so that they can use it. So just kinda get an open mind and not just give it to one group specifically.
Okay. Alright.
We recognize that the current pavement by that hill is not the best thing with it sliding down and that putting turf on it or some grassy area is the best, you know, most stable option. But we would like to point out that that is a major area that we use in our day-to-day school activities. ROTC is year-round, four periods a day. And with football using it, 'cause they have all-year practices and bulky equipment, it would take away from the constant usage it has with our cadets. We have drill practice after school, Tuesdays and Thursdays throughout the year normally. And even with most access to this tennis courts as it was, we were struggling to have proper area to practice from running in between gym to gym with basketball in one, wrestling matches in the other, tennis having their practice days. There were days where we would have to practice, move all the tables in the cafeteria, but some days cheer was there, and that wasn't a possibility. And we would have to cancel our practices because there was nowhere for us to go. And so, if this area is taken and utilized as an all-year thing for the football practices, we think it would be quite harmful to kind of our unit as a whole. And Ms. Bennett, we, she's aware of that, and we've talked to her, and she's supportive of it and finding some solution to getting us some area that we could, you know, maintain utilizing it for our day-to-day activities that's kind of all year long. We're even having a week-long new cadet orientation this week, today. And the rest of the week where we use those tennis courts, teaching a whole new, the next year's batch of new cadets, how to drill and how to do all the basics. So, and even the gyms were full today. The middle of the summer, those gyms were full. So it's just, um, goes to show how full the areas are, and we kind of need somewhere to go.
Okay, alright. Anything else you'd like to add? You still got a little time.
Um, really just that we have a lot of cadets that put kind of their heart and soul into our teams. They go during their free time. If they're not doing anything in a class, they come down to ROTC and they do their work. We work through the summer with our workdays, getting ready for our summer camps that we host. And all these cadets put their heart and soul into doing all these things, so it's, um, like really kind of morale-crushing on the days where we are not able to practice and do what our teams are trying to do because of like a lack of location.
Alright. Ladies, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'm, I'm sure that there's a solution somewhere. Okay, alright. Uh, just one quick reminder to the board here, uh, as you speak this evening, please speak directly into the microphone. I know the folks that, uh, view our meetings online or watch them later on uh, have a really hard time, uh, making out what, uh, the speaker is trying to get across without being right up in that thing. Okay. So we'll move along then, and, uh, as it just so happens, the next item of business is unfinished business, and Mr. Oliver is going to talk about the tennis court and multipurpose field project, so you, uh, you ladies have good timing.
Thank you, sir. Chairman English, Vice Chair Mumaw, members of the board, special guests, school leaders, thank you for being here tonight. So it, it is, uh, very difficult to have to follow that presentation by our student cadets who have done such a great job in presenting a concern, and I share that concern. Um, and the only reason the tennis courts are being converted to a multipurpose field is that that ground is not suitable for tennis courts, and you all know that. And so there was, there was one decent option for the use of that space, which was to replace the field that's being taken for the new tennis courts. So that's, that's the reason that, that that space is being converted to a multipurpose field. Now, it, it will be used by football, but it'll also be used by soccer and other teams who use grassy areas to, to practice. And I'm sure that, that JROTC can also use it, but it's not the perfect surface for drill competition. I know that. Um, but I just wanted to remind folks why, why that is no longer gonna be the tennis court area, because those tennis courts have now failed twice over the years, and the, the ground is just not supportive of redoing those tennis courts one more time. So the, uh, the multipurpose field is meant to replace the practice field that is being turned into the new tennis courts down below. And I'll give you an update on where we stand for the construction. So most recently, uh, utilities conduits have been installed last week for future power, data, water, and a four-inch sewer line for future use to the girls' softball concession stand by the utility contractor. The main roadway down the hill to the tennis courts has been graded and is now on proper grade, uh, with stone covering. Curb and gutter will be starting this Wednesday by the contractor and port. The grading contractor is getting the building pad ready this week so that they can start digging the footers and getting the plumbing and electrical rough ends installed next week if the weather holds. The turf contractor will be here next week. And they should not be here at all this week, so that should not be an issue for it. To start the demo of the fencing at the old tennis court so that the new turf can be installed on the existing tennis court. The storm drain line will then be installed above this bank to catch the stormwater runoff from the field in the next couple weeks and tied into the new stormwater system that has been put in by the grading contractor. So that's a, a lot of, that's just an update of the recent movements, the, the major muscle movements, uh, down at the construction area. And nothing has happened yet at the side of the multipurpose field, but, uh, we've been assured by multiple parties that we will be ready to operate on the multipurpose field on thirty-one July, and that's the goal. Uh, three main points I want to remind you. At this point, we're still under budget for the total project. The multipurpose turf field is ready for use on thirty-one July, and the tennis courts will be ready for use on one December. At this time, we're still on target for all those. So, do I have any questions?
Anyone need some clarification or question for Mr. Oliver about the project? Well, I, I don't see why we couldn't allow a question or two.
No, ma'am. Um, so, the, the use of the tennis courts, the, the biggest issue there is the current tennis courts can't be used to play tennis.
I understand that.
So they have to be replaced. The, the multipurpose field will be used by any of the programs at the high school who are able and want to use it. That, that will be scheduled for lots of different groups. It's not just for one team, or it's not just for athletics. It's a multipurpose field. Yes, ma'am. It's just like any other, any other site at the school. Uh, the, the school leaders help coordinate who uses what facility at what time. Okay. Does that answer your question? Captain Ross, have you ever had a problem scheduling a space if you needed it at the high school? And I, I can promise you, there's, there, there's no one in this district who cares more about how the JROTC program is treated and resourced than I do. So I'm not saying that I care more than anyone else, but I can promise you no one cares more than I do about that program. Yes, ma'am. Uh, I appreciate your, your concern.
Alright.
Any other questions?
Yeah, as a chairman of buildings and grounds, I've got some ideas too that I think would really help us out. I'm looking at the square footage of the current tennis courts that they are now, and our parking lot in a, in a piece that's underutilized right close to the ROTC that is really similar in size. And so there's some possibilities. I really believe that this would work, and the distance is really close. It would just take, you know, a couple block, blocking off areas, um, because our parking lots right now, the early college and stuff, are not as full as what they used to be before we had those schools in place. So I think there's some, definitely some options there, uh, to look at to help us out, which would be the same surface as basically the tennis courts. It'd be hard surface. Um, so there's some possibilities there.
Yes, sir. Are there, we can always look at different possibilities, and if there's a, if there's a, a site that's, you know, in close proximity to the, to the unit that works best, that can be utilized, we can do that.
Well, uh, perhaps it might be advisable then if the board's agreeable to ask our administration in conjunction with the administration at high school to look at possibility, perhaps utilizing an underutilized parking lot for a, a drill area.
Yes, sir. And we have, we have quite a bit of new pavement there too.
Okay.
So, Mr. English, I, I'd like to say to the cadets, first of all, thank you guys for, for speaking so, so well spoken. Um, but also just, I think all of us on the board want you to understand, I want this to be conveyed back. We don't ever want anybody in our school system to feel like that there's another group that's more important than they are. Because every kid that walks into every door of our school system is important. And so, this is one thing that the board talked about, um, when we were doing, looking at the tennis courts, looking at turning that into a multipurpose field. I know we talked about all of the different groups that we're gonna be able to use those. And so please, you know, um, do not feel like you don't take precedence over another group up there. This is definitely a solvable problem. Um, and thank you guys for bringing this to our attention. Um, and it's something that we won't, we won't let die. Um, like Colonel Oliver says, with his feelings about ROTC and with our feelings, just about kids. And, and you guys are all important, every one of you are. So this is, this is definitely something that's solvable for sure.
Absolutely. Okay, we'll, we'll move along then and, uh, trust our administration to work on that issue. Did you write that down?
I got it written down.
Alright. Okay, new business. Uh, one item of new business this evening is a resolution concerning House Bill eight twenty-three and Senate Bill four oh six, which is the Choose Your School legislation. Uh, the board has had a couple of weeks to, uh, mull over whether they wanted to, uh, include this as part of the meeting this evening, and the board did and, uh, expressed, uh, sentiment to, uh, bring it forward for discussion and action. And, uh, that was in the packet, I'm sure, a copy of the resolution. Uh, where is it? Very first, there it is, okay. And, uh, I don't know, of course, I guess most folks are, uh, familiar with the, uh, legislations, the legislators, um, move to, uh, to, uh, everything okay? Everything okay, chief?
Everything's good. It's coming down, it's poured down outside.
Oh, okay. No, no problem. But, uh, this concerns, uh, some legi- legislation that affects, uh, not only statewide education, but local education as well. And so, uh, Ms. Silver asked that we consider taking some action on it this evening, so, uh, Ms. Silver, I'll let you, uh, have your time for comments, and, uh, others can have theirs as well, but I'll cede the floor to you now.
Well, thank you. Do you want me to read the resolution, or do you want me to?
If you'd like to read it, you can, but I think,
I think the re-
If you want to just give an overview?
I can do that. Uh, this is House Bill eight twenty-three, Senate Bill four oh six. Um, it is, uh, Choose Your School, Choose Your Future is how they are, uh, selling this out of Raleigh and, uh, being a public school entity. Um, each of us, I, I asked Melissa Adams to send me a copy of the oath that, that we took when we were sworn to office. And that oath, uh, basically said that this board would protect the public school interest of the children in McDowell County schools. And so what, what this House Bill and Senate Bill would do if it were to be passed would be to take money away from our public schools in McDowell County, as well as the other hundred and ten districts across the state and place that into private and/or charter schools. Most specifically, as we talked at our work session the other day, um, these would be, uh, schools that are not under the same admissions guidelines that our students are. Uh, public schools, thank goodness, and that's why I looked at you and said, all means all, all means everything, um. We take all kids, we take, uh, from, from all the places that they come. We offer them the, the same education and, uh, private schools and charter schools are not held to those same guidelines. Private schools and charter schools are not tested under the same guidelines that our students and staff have to endure every year. And so, um, this is why there's several school systems across the state that are doing similar resolutions, and, uh, that's why Mr. Chairman and I asked that our board consider passing this resolution, uh, for our students.
Alright. Uh, anyone else, uh, care to, to weigh in? Let the thoughts be known?
Sir, I would.
Okay.
I, uh, said it earlier tonight, and I'm, I'm truly an advocate, advocate for North Carolina public schools. I, I am sincerely feel committed that by being on this board, I have a duty to support North Carolina public schools. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and be naive enough to say that we do the very best job we can do. But I wanna say this. We, as a board, and we as a school system here in McDowell County, and I can't speak on the hundred and fifteen LEAs in North Carolina, but I can speak for hours. We've got to do the very best job we can do at selling our schools and giving people opportunities and make people want to come to the public schools. And, and I wanna say this, just like I said about NJROTC, we offer things that we don't even blow our horn loud enough about. Our CTE program is second to none in the state. You can get a certificate as a welder making seventy-plus thousand dollars a year right out of high school. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and say that we, we do have to accept everybody. And I do know three families that left Nor- left McDowell County public schools because they weren't given the proper EC, uh, things that their kids need. A- and let me tell you, they went to private school and, and they were accepted, and they're, they're doing good. But let me tell you something. We can do better, and we're gonna be an advocate, and we're gonna sell our system 'cause we got the best system, but we got to show the people that we got the best system. But we got to show the people that we got the best system. But I don't want money taken away from our system. Or, or we, we're gonna be in trouble. You know, our teachers, we don't need to keep losing teachers. We need, we need what we got. And, and we're our best, uh, salesperson in the room. If we can't sell our schools, then, then hey, we don't deserve to be here, none of us. And that's all I've got to say, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got a comment.
Okay.
Um, when, when I ran for, for office, I answered a question by saying I was for school choice. Um, and I'm not above learning and changing, uh, an opinion. Uh, I'm not going to do that tonight. I'm, I'm gonna remain consistent with that. Uh, competition, I, I'm, I'm not sure that it's a zero sum situation or that it has to be. I'm not sure that the, that the private schools don't add greatly to the, to the community. I'm not sure that competition doesn't make us better. I'm not sure that, that safe, clean schools with numbers that are on the upswing are not what we should be, should be striving for. And we are. And I'm not sure that, uh, the private schools don't help us, help us do that. Um, struggle with this next sentence. People, a- and I'm, I'm gonna say it. People choose to send their students or their, their children to private schools because of their faith. And, um, I'm very positive. In fact, Kelly's comments tonight was to pray for the, pray for the school board. God, God is in the school system. He's not absent, but the, but the federal government and the Supreme Court system has taken away of, a lot of public schools' ability to educate children using that mechanism. And that's why some people send their children elsewhere. Um, and I'm very sympathetic to that.
Alright. Anyone else?
Thank you. Just wanna add that, you know, I, I think a bill like this that's being put forward really does communicate that a lot of people are not satisfied with what the public school system is able to provide and, um, and provide their families. But here in McDowell County, our administration and our teachers are working very hard with what we have. And we're doing the very best with what it is that we, that we have, what we get. Um, and, and we can be really proud of that. I think, you know, it, reform needs to happen a whole lot higher up than right here. Um, because there are a lot of families, not just, including families who want religious education, but others who have found, I have dear friends who were able to use a voucher system because their kids weren't getting what they needed in the public school system and they were able to thrive in another. Um, I agree that as an elected official for this, that my, my vote goes towards absolutely, we support, you know, um, a statement like this. But what this, this whole bill says is that there are issues within the public school system that need reform. And I think we can all agree with that. Um, but it doesn't necessarily start here. What we're asking, we need resources and we know it. Um, and we're doing the best with what we've got, so.
Two other real quick things. The accountability sentence in this resolution, I dare say is way off. That if public funds go to the private schools, that there will be regulation, oversight and, and accountability for those, for those dollars. And then here's a, a crazy idea. What if the public school system and the private school systems, plural, cooperated and looked for ways to partner? Um, to make every student's educational experience an improvement. I don't know, Mr. Gredd or, or school staff, if there's such a, a thing that's ever been, been undertaken. But it would seem to me that, um, that there's probably a lot that we could assist them with and perhaps that would go vice versa.
One of the main things, I'm a common sense guy and I look at this, one of the main things that separates the difference between private and public is that private has the opportunity to refuse a kid education. Because if they did not do that, they would be public education because they couldn't refuse a kid to do so. So if we're gonna pick two names, private and public, and private gets to choose who, which kids get the opportunity for education, that's not equal education. That's not what taxpayer money's for. So for me, equal education means everyone should have the opportunity. Now, if my child applies to a private school because I want something different and they get turned down, instantly someone who wanted that private is now gonna hate that and wanna go back to public because of what they've done to me personally. So I think we gotta really look at this. I don't think it's been planned out, thought out well enough yet. Um, but I think parents should have the choice, you know, on their, their children's education. And I think we need to do a better job as a state on our public education in some areas. So the combination of all, to me, is common sense. But, uh, right now to take taxpayer dollars and put it into a private institution and let them choose who they accept and who they don't, to me is, is not right.
Any further comments? So if there are no further comments, is there a motion to, uh, support the resolution?
Mr. Chairman.
Or affirm the resolution, I guess would be the proper term?
I'd like to make a motion that we affirm the revolution, resolution, um, by McDowell County Board of Education concerning universal private school vouchers.
Alright. Is there a second to that motion? Alright. Ms. Silver makes the motion. Mr. Settles makes the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Just one quick comment. Uh, the resolution that we have before us this evening doesn't exclude someone, the opportunity to obtain an alternative to public education for their student. What the resolution says is that the original inten- intention, the opportunity scholarship was to give lower income families the opportunity to find something different. And this bill will remove any income uh, qualifications. In other words, anyone could utilize the program. And I don't know that that's all bad, but what happens is in McDowell County, there's just not a whole lot of choice for families other than McDowell County schools. The private schools we have, I understand, are pretty much at capacity. So they're going to have to go somewhere else if they want something besides public schools. So that creates quite a burden and expense. So then what happens is, since there's not a whole lot of choice here, and I doubt that McDowell County is unique in the state of North Carolina. There's probably a whole lot of little old counties where there's not much other choice. So what happens is, is that public education funds that we could be using to help support our students here, winds up going to support the education of a more fluid family in a more metropolitan city where there's more opportunity for private choice. And that, that really burns me. I, I, I just wish the legislature could have considered this further before making, uh, some move towards legislation. Just my two cents. Anyone else have any further comments? If not, all in favor of affirming the resolution, right hand? There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And all of those in opposition? Mr. Abernathy votes in opposition. So the motion carries and the resolution is affirmed. Okay. While I have the floor, I would like to, uh, echo Dr. Gredd's comments and publicly thank our local Board of Commissioners for finding, uh, an extra, uh, hundred thousand dollars that they could support us with. Uh, that will really go a long way towards keeping up with, uh, the inflationary pressures that everyone is feeling nowadays. And although it's not what we asked for, it certainly is more than what we had. So we're, we are grateful to them for looking and trying to find that. And I know personally that some, some, uh, county-supported operations asked for extra and didn't get any. So we need to be grateful for, for what we, what we have. So, uh, I want to say thank you to our county commissioners. Uh, we'll continue on then with board reports and while I have the floor, I'll just keep talking, if that's okay. Um, I think, uh, one of the things that, uh, we kinda let get by last month without much fanfare, is the, uh, hard work by our child nutrition staff to, uh, apply for the community eligibility provision, which allows every single public school student in McDowell County, regardless of where they attend, to have free breakfast and free lunch every day that school is in session. So, uh, that's huge. And for the public's knowledge, it doesn't come without potential risk as well. Because, uh, if our school nutrition program goes in the red, the Board of Education has to bring them back up to, to zero. So there is some potential risk there. But this board felt that it was important enough of a, that we should take the opportunity to, uh, participate. So I want to thank Mr. Haynes and child nutrition staff for, uh, crunching the numbers and making the presentation. And I want to thank the board for supporting that at last month's meeting. Uh, also, just as a follow-up from a couple of months ago, maybe three now. Uh, you know, the board did say that we would have our attorneys, Campbell and Shatley, to provide training for our principals and administrators in regards to their responsibilities under the law regarding bullying, harassment and discrimination. And I understand that that is on schedule for this summer. Uh, Dr. Gredd, maybe you could chime in or Mr. Oliver, Ms. Ivy, some more?
Sure. Uh, that's part of what we discussed with our executive cabinet, uh, just this week. Uh, we, we have our leadership retreat that's coming up. Uh, that's August first and second. And Mr. Campbell, I believe, was the first day, which was the first. August first. Uh, to be able to have that conversation and really help, uh, us delineate those, uh, roles and responsibilities that we have as administration. Uh, similarly to what he did with, uh, what the board and responsibilities of the board are. Uh, he'll be doing the same thing and, and help point us in the right direction as well, so we can all stay in our lanes.
Alrighty. So, uh, just want the public to know that it wasn't, you know, it just takes a while to get the logistics together to, uh, have something like that take place. But it is set to happen now. And also it might be, uh, very helpful as, uh, we focus our attention this year, particularly on behavior and discipline issues and the other assorted things that come with that. Uh, so, uh, I, I feel like things are moving in a positive direction there. So, uh, I'll hush up for a little while and let others that may, uh, care to, uh, report, uh, to the board. I'll let them, uh, have the floor. Anyone? Head start, anything going on with head start?
They are working hard all day, every day. But I asked Dr. DuLaney today, I said, have I missed a policy meeting? We don't have those in the summer. But head start is going strong all day, every day. But, but I would like to take just a moment during my head start report, just to, uh, comment on, on my adventures today. Um, so, uh, as, as Dr. Gredd shared, Eastfield will be cranking into full gear tomorrow. And so I, uh, asked Ms., well, it, it all started, uh, when West Marion's H V A C system went out. And I, I shot Ms. Pupoe a message and I said, hey, let's buy some popsicles and cold drinks and take them out to West Marion. And, and she said, I'm tied up all day today, but, uh, she, she did what I love. And she said, let me give you a little bit of money to help with that. So I, I so appreciate you doing that. Um, so first and foremost, just being able to be with that group out at West Marion today. And, and like you said, the little girl in the sweatshirt, I, I said, perfect. You realize it's ninety degrees outside? She was having a blast. Um, so I wanna speak about that just for a second. Um, a lot of people think that teachers take the summers off. And, uh, you could go to any school in this county, um, and, and find teachers teaching kids, uh, leading summer camps, getting their classrooms ready. Uh, doing all those things that nobody sees. Uh, but our schools are not quiet right now at all and your principals are, are agreeing. You know, so just, just for all of our school staff that's been there on those times, um, you know, filling those gaps and, and we talked about today, um, you know, we, we kinda hesitate to do countdowns at the end of the year now because for so many of our kids, school is a safe place. And so those kids have been able to be back and they don't get sad when they realize it's gonna end because they know somebody's gonna be there. You know, taking care of them, making sure they're getting breakfast, making sure they're getting lunch, making sure they're getting popsicles. You know, so, so Ms. Pupoe, thank you for that. Um, and then we just carried that theme on. I was like, well, hey, why don't we get some donuts and, um, what did I have? Donuts, juice and, and K cups? I didn't even have a curing, but I had K cups when I was going around. So again, um, the Eastfield staff was very, very appreciative of that and I am as well. But I'm gonna tell you guys, um, that staff at Eastfield is rocking and rolling, Ms. Baker. I, I kinda got wrapped up in the whole thing. I, I may have said something that I'll regret later. I said, man, if I ever think about going back in the classroom, I don't wanna work for you. She was like, really? I was like, no, I don't even know. I don't even know what I'm saying at this point. But, um, man, that school, it is spit shine. It is, you're the grounds. And I know you did a lot of that yourself, Ms. Baker and, uh, your, your custodian, Mr. Mike, getting it ready and just seeing how beautiful it is. And knowing in less than twelve hours, it's gonna be full of kids. And again, that's why we do what we do. I know, you better get home. So, uh, but, um, just, I, I, I did wanna do that. And Dr. DuLaney, I'm looking forward to having a policy council meeting, be able to share for head start. But I just, uh, I'm just thankful, you know, I'm just thankful for all the things that our people do that nobody ever sees happening. So, thank you for having me today.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Frank, is our R O T C liaison representative?
And we have a great report from N J R O T C.
Good.
Uh, Mr. Oliver, or Colonel Oliver, uh, being a fellow veteran, I don't know if you like R O T C any better than I do. I, uh, Hey, let me tell you, I'm tired of the Air Force having to take a backseat to the Marine Corps, but we're, we're, we're gonna do it, okay? Hey, but, uh, we, we, jet noise is the sound of freedom, sir. Let me get on here, cause I do have some great news. Uh, the marksmanship team traveled to a week-long camp in Anniston, Alabama in June. And on the final day, participants, uh, competed in a match which ends with the top eight scores, uh, competing in a final. All eight were from MacDow.
Oh, wow.
The team is young. There's no seniors this year. So we anticipate another successful year according to Captain Ross. And this week, thirty-five cadets are at McDowell High School preparing for the week at Camp Budshill. And that camp starts the twenty-fourth of July with graduation at nine AM on the twenty-ninth of July. And, uh, one thing, talking about air conditioning. And, uh, one thing, talking about air-conditioned West Marion Elementary School, ROTC hasn't had air conditioning since April. And, uh, but let me tell you something, they're not complaining. They're, they're just happy to be there, sir. And, uh, I, I appreciate you taking a personal interest in them as well as I do. And, uh, uh, us veterans do have to stick together, sir.
With the comments about marksmanship success, I think that the amendment that the board made in the program several years back with purchase of the digital targeting system paid huge dividends.
Yes, sir.
What, what kind of firing range do they use?
They use the GM.
It's indoor. And it's air, air rifle.
Air rifle.
Is that what they compete with? Or do they compete with regular? With air rifles?
It is a really cool system. If you haven't had a chance to go out there and see it and to see the students in action, it is, it is a really neat and cool system. We really are, it really is a gift that we as a district have this. It was. Well, and one of the other things about it is that there's so few in the state and that we're able to host competitions and that, uh, students from all over the state travel into, and their families travel into McDowell County in order to be a part of, um, those competitions and use our range. So in a lot of ways, that investment has, it's just been a, a huge benefit in McDowell County. And so it was, you know, well done.
Is there ever a need for something like what the county operates with their range? Or is it completely indoors and completely at that distance?
Completely in, it's completely indoors. If you've ever been to one of the competitions where the other schools come, that's the only way that they compete is those indoor, digital. Thank you, digital. But you don't, you don't have to wait for the competitions to see it in action. We have a smaller scale in, yeah, in, in, yeah, in the ROJ. Yes, in the room. In the room.
Any other board members have anything to report?
Sorry, just a reminder to the policy committee that we do have a meeting this Thursday at 3:30 here. If you haven't picked up your packet or if you, it, it's in your email. And if you want a hard copy of it, you can pick it up, um, at the offices. Robin will have it for you. And please, please, please read through those before, otherwise it will, we will be here for a very long time. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Bill is going to ground, I'll talk to the, uh, committee later. But, uh, we have three businessmen that graduated from McDowell High School that wish to be anonymous. They did say, I could say they graduated all in the same year, believe it or not, that have, uh, agreed to pay for a new sign for McDowell High School. Once we come up with it, they said as long as it's not the size of McDowell County, that they will pay for it. So if we can get, uh, as a committee, look at the three options, I've got pricing on all of it and three different companies to do that. So we can look at that and maybe make a decision, but they still do that.
All right.
So what you're saying is as long as it's not big as the flag, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can do hand flip, we'll flip the signs, but it's not digital if it's that big.
All right. Okay. Uh, well, uh, just to give you a quick update on the North Carolina School Boards Association, uh, the big talk down in Raleigh is about budget. And the budget all hinges on education legislation that's up for debate and consideration. And right now, that's why you heard Dr. Gritt say we're operating on a continuing resolution because there is no official budget because of debate on, uh, education legislation. Uh, another thing that was, uh, reported at the Board of Directors meeting I went to is that the School Board Association, uh, was bragging on all the districts because they have 100% of their members that paid their dues this year. So that's good. Another item that you may find of interest, board, is the North Carolina School Boards Trust gave a presentation. And they've had a real uptick in interest on cybersecurity and malware coverage through their, uh, insurance program. And, uh, of course, you know, that's something that we all have to grapple with. And, uh, I know, uh, all folks that have a McDowell County Schools email are having to do the two-step verification, which is really tremendous aggravation. But it is a necessary aggravation.
It's very, very important. It's very important. And as somebody who works in cybersecurity, it's very important and it is a hassle. I don't like passwords, I don't like it either, but it is very important that it's a stuff that we do. Because honestly, we are the biggest cybersecurity threat, you and me. We are, you know, our, our kids, our teachers, the human threat is the biggest threat. So, um, so I, when I saw it and I got it, I was like, oh, oh, good. That's a good thing. So it is a very good thing.
Mr. Barry Hill back there at the control is our, uh, man, my mind is a total blank. He's our technology director. Thank you, Dr. Gritt. It'll happen to you one day. But, uh, thank you, Garrett, for getting that ball rolling. Not only does this keep, uh, our district-wide system secure, but it also closes a lot of doors for folks that might want to hold us hostage, which I don't know if the public's aware of this or not, but that happened to us several years ago. Uh, we were a victim of malware. And also, the two-step verification process helps keep our insurance premium at a lower level. So it's worth doing. Uh, one other thing, I, they did hand me a copy of a report from the North Carolina Lottery Commission. And so if anyone's interested, any member of the public or the board is interested in finding out where the, all the lottery money went to in 2022, it's all in this little packet right here. And you're welcome to take it and pass it on to the next person that would like to, to read it. Okay? So, uh, that was pretty much all we did at the, uh, School Boards Association Board of Directors meeting. So is there, uh, anything else that needs to be reported? If not, then we'll move along to item 11, which is the approval of our consent agenda for this evening. And board members, you're aware that any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered, uh, on its own merit. So if there is no item that you would care to remove for singular consideration, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Pupo makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Silver makes the second, thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, then all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, right hand, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to move into closed session for, uh, privileged or confidential student information pursuant to the Federal Education Rights Privacy Act and General Statute 115C dash 402E. And, uh, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 115C dash 319 dash 321, which includes employee matters. Is there any other reason for the board to go into closed session? If not, then is there a motion to do so? Mr. Abernathy makes the motion to go into closed session. Mr. Schuford makes the second. Is there any discussion? If not, then all in favor, right hand, and the motion carries unanimously. And the board will convene in closed session. Thank you, folks, for coming and being with us. Public, principals, administrators, thank you.